Good morning. It's September ninth, two thousand and twenty five. Here at the Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors meeting, just a little bit after nine o'clock. If you would, please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Mike Douglas of the Serving Church Fellowship.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for our representatives on the dais, the sacrifices they and their families make for them to serve us, and we pray that you would give them great discernment and wisdom today as they meet the challenges of the moment and plot the course for the future of Stanislaus County. We pray that you would bring and maintain peace and safety in our neighborhoods and for our business community, a robust and profitable business community as well. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. First on the agenda is Presentations, Stanislaus County 2024 Agricultural Crop Report. Linda Pinfold.
Good morning, Chairman Condit, members of the board, CEO Hayes, County Council Bose, and all in attendance today. I'm Linda Pinfold, Agricultural Commissioner, Sealer of Weights and Measures. We're excited to present to you this morning the 2024 Stanislaus County Agricultural Crop Report. The report recognizes and celebrates the historical and economic significance of our dairy industry. I want to give a big thank you to Stanislaus County's agricultural producers, industry partners, public agencies, the Farm Bureau, UC Cooperative Extension, and the Department of Environmental Resources for providing the data, photos, and information that made this report possible. And of course, I need to give a big shout out to our crop report team. Carrie Baughman, Amy Lamelli, Melissa Lovett, and our in-house artistic talent Cassie Costa, who designed the report. Their dedication, teamwork, and can-do spirit make putting this report together not just successful, but truly fun. This is hands down the best crop report team I've ever worked with, and I'm so incredibly grateful for them. So for 2024, Stanislaus County's total gross agricultural production is valued at just over $3.15 billion. That's a decrease of about $216 million, or approximately 6% from the 2023 value of $3.4 billion. This decline is consistent with trends observed across the nation. Traditionally, this presentation focuses on our 10 highest-valued commodities. As you can see, they represent most of the production value of our county. Please be aware that these are farm gate values. They should not be interpreted as profit or loss because they do not account for production costs or the incredibly important economic multipliers on our county's economy. Amy, I'll turn this over to you for your top 10.
Thanks, Linda. Number 10, eggs remained in the number 10 position, but despite a significant loss in production. Even more than meat birds and dairy, this industry has been battered heavily by avian influenza. At number nine, tomatoes. Processing tomatoes had lower prices and fewer acres planted in 2024, resulting in a decrease of $47 million. Pollination is number eight. Slightly fewer hives were placed in 2024, largely due to self-pollinating almond varieties, lower almond prices, and availability from beekeepers. Number seven is walnuts. This commodity increased $32 million in value. Acreage continues to contract, but prices were stronger than in 2023. Silage, our sixth most valuable commodity, saw steady values in production. Over 50% of our silage acreage and over 64% of the silage value is corn, primarily used as dairy feed. Fruit and nut nursery products remain fifth in value for our county. Stanislaus is home to several large wholesale nurseries specializing in permanent crops. Rocky commodity prices have resulted in decreased nursery production. Cattle and calves remain at number four. Number of head decreased, but prices held fairly steady. Number three, poultry. Poultry decreased in value largely due to lighter birds and the effects of avian influenza on flocks in the county. Our featured industry this year, milk is the second highest-valued commodity, $755 million. Stanislaus is home to over 11% of the state's milk production. This industry suffered some new challenges in 2024 and into this year that Linda will touch on in just a moment. I also hope you have a few minutes to check out dairy facts that we've included towards the back of this year's report. And finally, almonds remain our highest-valued commodity. Increasing 11% in value from last year, almonds saw slight increases in acreage and kernel values. Linda, I'll turn it back over to you to round out our presentation.
Thank you so much, Amy. And now I'd like to discuss a couple of significant events that we encountered last year in our county and are also touched on in our report. First, I'd like to talk about highly pathogenic avian influenza. Since 2022, this virus has devastated poultry flocks across the country, and Stanislaus County has been no exception. For the past three winters, we've seen cases of poultry, especially turkeys, chickens, and egg-laying hens, continue to rise. Avian influenza is devastating because it spreads quickly and causes nearly 100% mortality in commercial poultry flocks. That means massive losses for farmers, higher costs for consumers, and disruptions all along the food supply chain. Controlling outbreaks often requires calling entire flocks, which adds even more financial strain. Last year, we saw something entirely new. The virus jumped species into cattle. Between late 2024 and early this year, it spread rapidly, and over 110 of our 132 dairies ended up under quarantine. That's more than 80% of our county's dairies. Thankfully, the virus doesn't kill cows the way it does poultry, but it did cause significant drops in milk production. As we approach another winter, we continue to work closely with local agencies, industry partners, and the California Department of Food and Agriculture to monitor the situation and track any impacts on animal health. Last August, we discovered a new pest, the Glassy Wing Sharpshooter infestation, in Turlock. Because this pest is invasive, a quarantine area was established to focus on the containment and eradication of the pest. Since then, we've been setting traps, conducting surveys, and using integrated pest management, specifically releasing parasitic wasps and applying targeted treatments. The concern is that the sharpshooter spreads Zyella fastidiosa, the bacterium that causes Pierce's disease in grapes, which has no cure and kills the vines. Also, other strains of this affect alfalfa, citrus, almonds, olives, oleander, and even shade trees. This pest threatens agriculture, neighborhoods, and wildlands as it feeds on more than 300 plant species with local favorites such as citrus and crepe myrtles. Instead of chewing on the leaves, Glassy Wing Sharpshooter taps into the plant's stems for water. Its heavy feeding produces messy sharpshooter rain that can leave plants looking whitewashed and even cause lower fruit quality, especially in citrus. Eliminating the Glassy Wing Sharpshooter from Turlock will require time, persistence, and teamwork. State protocols require that at least two years without any detection must occur before quarantine can be lifted. And based on our experience, the full process will likely take at least five more years. We deeply appreciate your patience, cooperation, and support as we work together to protect our community and our crops by successfully eradicating this pest. Lastly, I'd like to take a moment to recognize and honor our farmworkers. Farmworkers are the backbone of our agriculture and essential to keeping our food systems running. They plant, prune, irrigate, harvest crops, care for livestock, and make sure food gets from the farm to our tables. Their work keeps food affordable, prevents losses, and supports our entire economy. Without them, we'd see higher prices, more food insecurity, and real disruptions in our food supply. You might remember that during the early days of COVID-19 pandemic, farmworkers were recognized as essential workers. That recognition reminded us just how critical these individuals are to our community and to our agricultural economy. To honor their contributions, the Stanislaus County Farm Bureau, AgSafe, and the Modesto Rotary Club started the Farm Worker of the Year Award in 2021. This past spring, we were proud to join them and the Central Valley Opportunity Center in recognizing Frank Hernandez of Vermulon Almond Hauling in Modesto, along with 10 other outstanding individuals for their dedication and hard work. Highlights of this celebration are included in our crop report. I also want to recognize farmworkers. I also want to encourage farmworkers to get involved in the Stanislaus County Farm Worker Advisory Committee. We're looking for 10 representatives, two from each of the supervisory districts, to help advise the county on issues like housing, health, workplace conditions, and immigration. Appointees get $100 stipend per meeting for up to six meetings per year. Applications are open through the end of September on the Clerk of the Board's website. If anyone needs help completing the applications, they can reach out to my office at (209) 525-4730. Language should not be a barrier, as I have staff in my office who speak Spanish as well as several other languages. This committee can only be successful if farmworkers step up and participate. So each year, as required by law, we produce this crop report to share the current condition of agriculture in our county. We've brought a few hard copies, which are available outside the entrance. All of our crop reports are also posted on our website at www.stanag.org. Thank you all for allowing us this opportunity to provide our presentation today. We're happy to take any questions, and of course, we hope to hear from Supervisor Casey's predictions for the 2025 crop year.
Thank you, Linda. Any questions or comments?
I do have just a couple of comments. Linda, wonderful presentation, and thank you so much for including the recognition of our farmworkers this year in the report. It's obviously very significant and the core reason as to why we are a success in Stanislaus County with our agricultural production. And I anticipate the Farm Worker Commission being put together and established, and hopefully next year, we could acquire some of that significant data, like you mentioned, regarding housing, the quality of life, and so on and so forth, into the presentation. So we highly anticipate that and looking forward to the commission coming together and convening. So again, thank you for all your hard work. Thank you for all you do, and thank you to your staff.
Thank you.
It's just a presentation. Well, if the public wants to comment.
Okay, I guess I'll go if that's okay. So I'm glad you start off always with the same thing. It's gross versus net. This is gross proceeds. There's a multiplier effect, obviously, that we talk about with truckers, people making cans, boxes, and so on and so forth in agriculture. It continues to be the economic driver of Stanislaus County. It is tough times, as you articulated. You see that it's down. The crops that are doing the best are typically dependent upon contracts, so they're limited in scope. Think of tomatoes or peaches right now, where if you don't have a contract, you don't plant them. And farmers aren't built that way. That's the funny part. The farmers are built to compete continually. The reason that we've been successful, I think, over the last 50 years is production levels continue to go up. The most efficient operations continue to expand. And when you're contract-dependent, sometimes that's not the case. You may get lucky and get a contract, or you don't get one and your neighbor does. So it's interesting times. Luckily, so coming back to the actual crops, almond market has gone through a tough time, and it seems to be getting a little better. Some of that's probably dependent upon stigma and the lack of water availability, especially south of Merced. Milk, you know, it's kind of a dichotomy because I think the receipts were down this year, but feed prices are down luckily. That is not the double whammy form where feed prices are up, which hurts in silage and other things, almond hulls and such. But the beef price has been really high, which has helped the dairy farmer out a little bit. Poultry would actually be doing well. We look at egg laying and poultry, but if it wasn't for avian influenza, which you highlighted, it's really hurt everyone and increased the prices and inflation for people just to eat, but not because the farmers didn't want to produce, but because of an outside issue. But I see that rebounding now. Nursery stock is not going to get any better for the time being because no one's planting trees. It is a tough market. Silage price is going to be flat next year. I'm looking. Walnut prices are going to be down a little bit. Crop is up. Pollinization is going to continue to trend downward just because of the self-pollinating varieties. Tomatoes, this could be the apex. Got a beautiful crop this year, beautiful quality. But I think now it's going to be overproduced in this year, and eggs are going to make the big comeback. They're going to go from number 10 to number eight or seven next year. As long as we don't have avian influence, I think you're going to see, because they're prepared. But overall, great work, again, to the farmers. I see Farm Bureau is here. And the job they do, the farmworkers, the farmers, the chances they take with interest rates now, buying land, it's like a betting game. But I've never met a farmer who doesn't believe they're up for the challenge. I so much appreciate, you know, what they do, what they try and accomplish in keeping our feed prices down. I mean, food prices, not feed, food prices down. So again, hats off to Farm Bureau, the largest farm bureau in California, Stanislaus County, which is the, what, 16th-largest county, but where the number-one farm bureau has the most members of any farm bureau in the state of California. So it shows you that we're still strong. Eight of our 10 largest major manufacturing employers are still ag-based because we have lower electricity costs, just a lot of things going our way right now. So thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you, Vito. Linda, team, thank you for your presentation. Great presentation. It just goes to show we have some of the best farmers, dairymen. Hold on, Brian. Some of the best dairymen, farmers, and ranchers around. The things that they have to deal with as far as disease and natural disasters, and they just still keep producing. So hats off to them, hats off to our farmworkers who put in the work and keep things moving. Great report. Thanks again. Brian, if you have something to say, you can do it in public comment. All right. Moving on, September 25, as Workforce Development Month in Stanislaus County, Doris Foster.
Good morning. You should all have a copy of our annual report. And so, good morning, Chairman Condit, members of the board, CEO Hayes, County Council Bose. I'm Doris Foster, your Department Head over Workforce Development. With me today, I have Cecil Russell, which is, who sits on our Workforce Development Board, as well as our management staff. A special acknowledgement to Supervisor Graywell, who also sits on our board. Very grateful that he continues to serve in that capacity. And the clicker is right here. So we're excited to do September as Workforce Development Month. This is the first time that we're coming to the board to ask for a proclamation to celebrate. We've been doing a lot of things for our staff. We have a staff picnic. We are doing Workforce Wins. Workforce Wins is where we celebrate businesses and employees and also clients that we get into different positions. We put that on our social media. It's really been an exciting time just to take the month of September and celebrate. Yesterday, we presented our annual report to our Workforce Development Board. Just some demographics that you'll find inside of the report. We have 221 individuals that are currently employed in Stanislaus County. This is down from 231 that we saw last year. We also have 222,000 businesses in Stanislaus County. This has gone up from last year by 1,000. So that's been kind of interesting. What we are finding is the majority of businesses here in Stanislaus County have 10 employees or over. It's 85%. So there's very few larger businesses, and we really try and serve the smaller businesses. Education-wise, age 25 and up, we're seeing 79% have a high school degree. We're seeing this as a lot lower in our area compared to all of California. And of those 79, 21% have a bachelor's degree or higher. This is some of the educational attainment that we see, age 25 and above. It's 11.5% have less than a ninth grade, and we're also seeing 9.5, ninth to 12th grade. So these are the individuals that we really want to serve to help them get their high school, get skilled up, get some of that education. Our top employment sectors that we are seeing is healthcare, and that's maintained strong throughout the years. This is going slightly up. Last year, we were at 16.27. Government has gone up this last year. Last year, it was at 14.8%. And retail manufacturing are staying about the same. We're seeing a slight decrease in accommodation of food services. That's down from 9.6%. In-demand sectors, according to our regulations, we're required that our Workforce Development Board identify in-demand sectors in which we're seeing a lot of employment in. These are the five sectors that our Workforce Development Board approved, healthcare being the top. We're seeing an increase in the next five to 10 years. When we've done our projections, we're seeing a 10.6% increase in healthcare, a slight increase in manufacturing. We are, however, seeing a decrease in agriculture. We took that to our board, and we determined that we still would like to include it in the in-demand sector. Even though we're only seeing about a 6% employment in that, we still feel it's important, and we still feel it's important for our community and for those who are looking for employment. Some of the highlights that you will see in the annual report is we have an average cost. What we do is we look at what our total cost is for the year, our actuals, and then we divide that by the businesses and the clients that we serve. This has gone down. Last year, we were at 2,400. This is considerably lower from what I'm hearing across the state. Most of my counterparts are seeing more of a $5,000 cost per client, and so this is something that we really want to focus on. Our visits to our job centers have increased. We have job centers in Turlock, Patterson, Oakdale, and Modesto. That has increased by 1,000, and we are seeing more people coming to our workshops. So that's been exciting. One of the things that we're hearing at the federal level with the Trump executive orders has been there's going to be a bigger push for apprenticeship training. So we had 24 apprenticeship trainings this last year. They were in traditional jobs. The average received employment at about $25, $26 an hour, which is what we're seeing for good jobs. And so we will continue to look at apprenticeship training this next year. However, we want to take a look at those non-traditional, and these 24 have been really traditional apprenticeships. We want to look at non-traditional, see how we can get more involved in the community in providing those services. Exciting this year, our Workforce Development Board identified new priorities. They line up with the Board of Supervisors, and so we take our agenda items that also have on there the priorities. I want to do a special shout-out for some of our targeted programs. We work with Christine on our Welfare to Work clients and her staff. This is one of the majority of clients that we have coming in, a little over 600. And the numbers have been increasing lately, and so coming out of COVID, it was kind of going slow, and it's really been increased, which has been nice. Also, want to mention Mark at probation, Sheriff Dircksey at the Sheriff's Department, and then Department of Corrections. We've been working with the justice-involved clients and helping them get employed. The wage for employment for them has not as high as we saw in the apprenticeships. They're getting more jobs in the $20 range. We're also working with Beljith and now Marissa on our non-custodial parents. We're really excited about this program. This is our third year doing it, and we have found that we have gotten non-custodial parents employed, and they're bringing in funding that now pays for the position and pays for that contract. We work with the Department of Rehabilitation for Disabled Youth, and it's for high school students, and they are able to get employed work experience. We have two grants for our farmworkers. One is through the ARPA, which is through CBOC, which you would have heard about through Stanislaus 2030. And the other one is we receive federal discretionary dollars in order to provide services for English, to teach English language to our farmworkers. And then last but not least is our Adult Dislocated Worker and Youth, which is our Workforce Innovations and Opera Duty Tax federal funding, which I'll talk about in a little bit more. Services that we provide for businesses are rapid response. This last year, we had 42 businesses that we served. Of those 42 businesses, we had 1,688 employees that were reduction enforced, and we were able to work with them, either helping upskill them or get them in different jobs. Underserved businesses, we've started a new program this year. We've identified over 7,000 businesses who are struggling, and so we want to go out and we really want to help serve them. Wanted to throw the HR hotline on there because that's a special service that we offer to businesses. We pay for the contract. It is a bunch of attorneys. It's through California Association. They pick up the phone. They say Stanislaus County Workforce Development. It's a free service to any businesses in our community who wants to get HR advice or assistance. And then we also have our work-based learning that we offer for businesses. That's on-the-job training, apprenticeships, incumbent worker, and work experience. Our WIWA funding, we're struggling this year, and this is something that I really wanted to bring to your attention. We don't know where funding is going to come for next year. We have three things that are currently on the table. One is America Skilled Workforce Act. The change in that would then create a larger amount of our funding, would go towards training. We have set ourselves up for that, and if that comes through, we will be really happy. We are hoping that we might see that at the end of September. October 1st is the fiscal year. We are currently forward-funded. The other one is Make America Skilled Again. This is also on the table. The Department of Labor has hired facilitators to come in and start talking to us about how they would bring that money. This is a block grant, so it would have to bid into, there's a different coordination on how that's approved. If that happens, the state will then be overseeing what happens in our community. And the last one is a WIWA reauthorization. That's also just recently put back on the table. If that happens, we would lose, they would have what they're calling a gap year, and we would not get funding for one year, but then we would be funded every year for the future. So we're staying really on top of this and watching this closely. And my last slide is what are we doing in the future? So we have a business one-stop that you heard at the last meeting with Stanislaus 2030. We are setting up a transportation warehouse sector. We're restructuring the new programming based on federal and also researching new grants. I know I talk fast, but I want to make sure I hit that 10 minutes. So, thank you. Any questions?
I do have a question on the, you talked about the traditional apprenticeship versus non-traditional. I'm assuming traditional is the reunions.
Correct.
IBW, pipe fitters, steam fitters. What would be non-traditional?
It could be with healthcare. It could be with any area that we're seeing a need for employment. It could even be, and there are the construction. Those are the ones that we normally see, but we're trying to do something outside of the box, so just taking a look at that. So one of them is healthcare that we've identified, that we've been looking at doing something like that. Basically, that's probably our first attempt.
Does, when you do the traditional type, do you find that the unions want to, do they put skin in the game or a match or anything, or is it you funding 100% of it?
So it's 100% funded. So we had a hard time getting that started here in Stanislaus County. We started about two years ago. We were finding that the individuals that we were putting through were not getting employed. They were not being put on the list for the actual apprenticeships or getting those positions. This last year, we have found that the majority are getting positions, and they're getting higher positions. And so that's been really exciting to see. So we want to continue those services as a result of that.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Just great report, Doris. You guys are doing great work. I love the targeted programs, the areas that you guys are working to get involved in these individuals' lives that really need it and really can make a difference. in these individuals' lives that really need it and really can make a difference also. So anyway, thank you very much for what you guys are doing.
Thank you.
And I also just wanted to comment, being a member of the board, it's such a privilege. I would like to tell the public and the colleagues, my colleagues, very committed board, as well as a great staff that makes sure that the information is very transparent and given in a very well manner. The reason I say the board is very committed, there's a lot of different committees that are on the board, and I think we always have good representation. The other thing is, this year, there's been some travel because of the board going with other workforce development boards up and down the state and kind of seeing if there's any synergy and things that they have commonalities in, which they all learned that there's very much so. So they usually met on a yearly basis, but now they'll be meeting on a bi-yearly basis to just compare notes and make sure that things are doing, doing good. But we are, I'll feel remiss if I said that. We got some award for being one of the more active.
We got an award two years in a row for high-performing board.
High performing.
And I double-checked, and only 30% of boards in California receive that award. I should have started with that.
All right. I'm glad you finished with that. That's the highlight. That's the mic drop from workforce development. And then also workforce wins. Those are, those are fun to watch. You see the changes we're making in the community with everything we're doing, and those are always nice to see, you know, whether it's a testimonial. Yesterday was many, many testimonials of people that have been helped by the workforce development board. So thank you. Great job, great presentation, and it's a privilege and honor to serve on that board.
Thank you so much, Mr. Doris.
All right. Doris, thank you so much for what you and your team do, day in, day out, equipping, equipping individuals, upscaling employment. Just thank you for that. I'm going to go ahead and read.
And while you're reading, I'm going to ask my staff to.
Yeah, absolutely. Come on up. Workforce de- Come on up, Cece. "Workforce development is essential for equipping individuals with the skills necessary to secure meaningful employment and for fostering economic growth within our communities. Whereas workforce development programs, including job training, career counseling, and educational opportunities, play a vital role in preparing job seekers to meet the evolving needs of local employers. And whereas collaboration among educational institutions, business, businesses, labor organizations, and government agencies is vital to creating a robust workforce development system that benefits all our residents. And whereas recognizing the importance of workforce development initiatives encourages continued investment and participation in programs that enhance the skills and employability of our workforce." And, excuse me, "Whereas the month of September has been designated nationally as Workforce Development Month to acknowledge the contributions of workforce professionals and their impact of workforce development programs across the country. And whereas Stanislaus County is committed to supporting and advancing workforce development efforts to ensure a thriving economy and improving quality of life for its residents. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim September 2025 as Workforce Development Month in Stanislaus County, and encourages all residents to recognize and support the workforce development programs and initiatives that contribute to the economic vitality of our community." Thank you. Hey, that was our last of our presentations. We'll be moving on to public comment. Public comment is a time for those in attendance to speak on items not already on today's agenda. Please state your name for the record, direct all comments towards the dice, and so it is fair for every speaker, keep the comments to a five-minute time limit. First card is Tara Chumley, Director of Parks and Recreation.
Good morning, and I'm Tara Chumley. I'm the Director of Parks and Recreation, and I'm thrilled to announce that after 15 years of being closed, we are reopening Bonita Pool in the community of Crow's Landing, beginning with a ribbon-cutting event this Saturday, September, let's see, 13th, at 11:00 a.m. And following the event, the Police Activities League will host free swim from 12 noon to 5 p.m. each Saturday and Sunday during the month of September. So we look forward to you joining us and bring your swimsuit. Thank you.
Thank you, Tara. All right. Next up is Rita.
Hello.
How you doing, Rita?
My name is Rita. I am from the Riverdale Park Track Community Service District, and I am trying to get some information because I can't find it anywhere. First off, we were supposed to be having improvements that were approved. We were told that they were supposed to be starting them in October. So far, I have seen nothing but marking, which doesn't last very long. So that is my first question because I want to make sure that's done. The next thing that's a big one for me is I'm trying to find out why was my area of, my district refused the recycling bins? Because I spoke to, I think, and I know the name, I can't think of it, the trash service, anyway. I spoke to them, and they said that you guys, the county, said not to send them to us because we don't need them. And they also said that they're being allowed to charge $45 per household, per billing section, per billing, excuse me, period. That is for over $14,000. And I know when you do recycling, you make money off of that. So if they're making money off of that, if they're going to make a profit, why are we being charged such a high amount? And why were we denied? The, last thing is I'm wondering also, since they're doing composting, where does the composting go? Do they make a profit off that as well? Those are my biggest issues right now.
Okay, Rita. Right back there in the, in the alleyway, big guy in the back, blue suit. He's waiting to answer all your questions.
Okay.
Robert Coslevy, Director of Environmental Resources.
Okay. Because honestly, I have seen that half of my district basically gets, excuse my language, gets screwed. We get none of our promises that we've ever had made to us have been fulfilled. None of them, not in 20 years that I've lived there. And he knows, he knows this, he knows I feel this way. I've had to sit down with him when we had a community meeting before, and he could not respond when I asked him why all the promises had not been met.
So Rita, yeah, we have spoken before.
Yes.
And promises that I've made to you, and as a lot of this whole board, we allocated funds to certain areas, $50 million, $55 million in total. And so what I did was-
Is that the new stuff?
That's the new stuff. So I requested that all of it, all of my, the funds that came to my district are going to Riverdale Track Park, and we're going to have curbs, cutters, sidewalks, sewer and water.
I understand that. I've actually went to that meeting, and, but nothing has been done. It was supposed to start in October.
But yeah, it's just, it's been delayed, and Dave can help you. Dave Lehman can help with that part of it as far as where we stand on that. But it, but it's coming, and coming for the first time ever, you know?
Yeah, I know.
And so I have promised that, and we will fulfill that promise. It's just unfortunate, government, you know how that is, it's slow, but we're, the money, the money is there.
Why has it taken 20 years to get anything done out there?
Yeah, I can't answer you that. I haven't been around and represented that district for 20 years, but I can tell you now I am, and it's coming.
Okay.
And it should be soon. So I appreciate you being here.
Yeah, we will see, because I, like I said, I'm very passionate about my neighborhood. A lot of my neighbors are immigrants. They don't speak English well, and I feel like they don't get represented as good as they should.
Yeah, very much aware of that, and that's why all these things are coming. Like we said, we're going to have curbs, cutters, sidewalks, so there's water coming from the city of Modesto. You guys are going to be off your wells, and we'll be off the septic tanks. So anyway, it's coming.
Yeah, I actually, I'm not, I'm not allowed to get in the shower because our, because we've had coliform in there, and I've got open wounds on my foot.
Yeah, no, that's why all these changes are coming, and it's going to happen soon.
All right, well, yeah, hopefully.
But thank you for coming today.
Thank you for being here, Rita. All right. Next up, Brian Evans. Good morning, Brian.
Good morning, you guys. Brian Evans, Wood Colony. Anyway, I want to go ahead and ask her agricultural.
You can direct it towards me.
The agricultural, okay. We haven't turned around, and we've got dispensaries that are located, and we're farming marijuana. It's a big expense. It probably should be on with the agricultural since we have so many dispensaries in the area, and they're basically a food product. They're making candies and everything else. It seems kind of, that that should be part of our agricultural. Second of all, is, is I'd like to say something about our training and everything for apprenticeship. We used to have a carpenters' union in here, and it was pretty good. Had a lot of people, put a lot of people to work. But we don't have a carpenters' union here. We don't seem to use union carpenters, or we don't train those apprentices. So maybe we should bring that back, because if we're going to do this building, and now we're heading out to Riverbank, and we're starting to build more out there, pretty soon, we're going to start a track that has 900-square-foot houses. The starting price is going to be around $400,000, which is going to increase the value of the homes around here, the building, small homes, and trying to sell them at that. But we're becoming a bedroom society, and we keep pushing it farther and farther out. When the main track line was 99, which I can't understand why, when mall, the mall was built and Hana was building that, we should have kept our town moving that way in that direction towards Salida, which is Terry's area. That should have been growing up with housing and stuff, but nothing's happened. We didn't get a convention center across from the highway from the mall. We didn't get our A stadium put over there. It's a side track, and it turns around, it brings in the stuff we need to make conventions. It has an area for parking. We're turning that place into a cemetery. It's basically what we're getting, is cemeteries along that. And that wasn't designed that way, and that's sidetrack. We can't keep pushing everything downtown here, which is just ridiculous. We got to look at it as we're a county. We're not catering to these cities and shoving everything into these cities. We're trying to spread out. But let's spread out down the track the way it was designed by the state. Let's take some initiative to do that, and I'd like to see us do that. And I'd like to welcome the new neighbors that are on the North Dakota, which is the Sons of Christ, that are moving in it. So they're moving out of, I guess it's your district over there, and they're moving to North Dakota Avenue. So I'd just like to say hi to those guys and invite them in. But let's see if we can turn around and get some changes, and we got to start somewhere. We can't just keep on going the wrong direction. We need to focus on the way it stayed planned. That's the way our highways run, and we need to go that direction. Don't leave these farmers out and put the road at the end of North Street going into Salida Boulevard, so we can relieve some of that access, that traffic on that side. The farmers are ready to give you the land. Don't tell them that they have to pay for the roads too. And that's what I've been hearing from the guys in my neighborhood, that you guys want them to pay for the road too. You know, so let's change that. Let's get something going over there, because they'd like to give the land up and have that road. And sure, as a community, we need that extra access. Relieve some of that traffic on that side. And then you start looking, and look at the Orchard Building, sitting empty. Why is it sitting empty? It shouldn't be. And we're shoving restaurants in front of the mall. That shouldn't have been. It was supposed to have a courtyard behind the mall, so you could drive through and go to all the restaurants. But we've changed that, and we shoved them in there. It's like, might as well put the taco wagges in there next, you know? Let's not do that. Let's grow like a community is supposed to. Let's enlarge ourselves. Let's make beautification be part of our plan. That's all I got to say. Let's work on that, you guys, you know? Because it's something we should have done 20 years ago. We're running way behind. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Evans, for being here. All right. That was my last public comment card. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to make a comment on anything not on the agenda? Come on up, Cece.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, supervisors, Mr. Hayes and Mr. Bowes. A lot's already been written about what came out and included in this year's Civil Grand Jury Report, but I want to look to the future. I've got a suggestion, somewhat tongue-in-cheek, but it's a suggestion that'll help keep you guys out of next year's Civil Grand Jury Report. When you travel to Washington, D.C., this is a Washington Metro fare card. $60 buys you one week unlimited rides throughout Washington, D.C. on both the bus and metro, a lot cheaper than renting a car. So next time you travel on county business, in other words, our nickel, you might want to consider using this instead of renting a car. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Any others like to make public comment about items not on the agenda? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment and move to consent calendar. I do have a request to pull item D1 and for a comment on A5. Is there any other public comment on items on the consent calendar? Bring it back.
Are we going to do the comment on it?
Yeah, let's do the comment first. Ron McMurtry, A5.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Ron McMurtry here. I've, my item's A5, approval to proclaim September 15th, October 15th as Hispanic American Heritage Month in Stanislaus County. I've expressed this concern before. To my recollection, at least the meetings I've attended, I have not seen the so-called usual suspects, Miguel, Bianca, and company, you know, participating. I remember them participating quite frequently, and so since the beginning of the aggressive ICE actions by the current administration and then exacerbated by the LA protests and the reaction from that, I think, I think it's fair to say, not knowing any of these folks myself personally, that there's, they're almost on the verge of terror. I've heard some interesting anecdotes, and I'm sure you've heard too. Just for the public's sake, there was a recent ruling by, I'm sure I don't know which court, I think it's an appeals court, but that, that the action by the National Guard was illegal and that the ICE agents were considered racial profiling. So that's going to get appealed, obviously. But anyway, my same concern, I wonder if any of the, did I say my, oh my, yeah, piece. I wanted to express a concern. I hope we can have, as we have in the past years, have a presentation and that there'll be actual participants this year, because if we can't pull this off, I think that will be an embarrassment to this body and to this county if we can't get a full-throated participation for Hispanic awareness or American Heritage Month. I'm, I've not gotten any feedback. I don't know if any of the supervisors or anybody wants to comment. Have you checked in with these folks and, you know, what's the state of this situation? No one wants to comment, too controversial. Okay. I tried to be as diplomatic as I could. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Okay, if we can go ahead and take the consent calendar minus D1.
Motion to approve the consent calendar minus D1.
I have a first and a second. Hall in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. All right, D1.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had pulled this item because there's some, obviously, some interested parties here and asked our staff to give a presentation. I think they have a couple of slides, and then we'll open it up for public comment, if that's okay. There is a, a video of this being circulated in Turlock that talks of some concerns, and so we'll try and deal with those. Thanks, Anna.
Good morning. Anna San Nicholas, Deputy Director for Community Development for the Planning Department, and thank you for the opportunity this morning to discuss our fiscal year '25, '26. to discuss our fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six funding recommendations for CDBG and ESG. Now, the points that we're gonna go over this morning are the grant programs and scoring criteria, grant review process, Community Development Committee, and the recommendations themselves. Now, the two grant programs that you have before you this morning are federal annual allocations that the county receives from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. So one thing to make note is that these are received as part of our St. Louis Urban County. So seven of the nine cities, Searies, Houston, Newman, Oakdale, Riverbank, Patterson, Waterford, are what come, make this urban county. But with these two programs, the, any programs that are funded for homelessness have no jurisdictional boundaries. So that is one thing to note. So CDBG Public Services, or Community Development Block Grants, are to help to support nonprofits serving low, very low, moderate income residents. And some of the activities that can be funded are family support, crisis intervention, food support. The Emergency Solutions Grants are specifically for operation or help for the shelters, homeless prevention, rapid rehousing, which is a form of rental assistance, and the Homeless Management Information System, HMIS, system support. And it focuses on reducing homelessness and increasing housing stability. Now, what we do is, every year, we do a NOFA, or Notice of Funding Availability, and the scoring criteria that we utilize is before you. So we have a Grant Review Panel that looks at these main points. Capacity and experience. Does the agency have the experienced staff, organizational structure to conduct the program proposal that they are asking funding for? The next one is addressing the need. They need to pinpoint and explain the problem, and not just state it, but back it up with some statistics. Collaboration, that's a big one. What are their partnerships in the community? Are they working in a silo, or are they working with the other resources in the community? Financials. Financials are examined by our Grant Review Panel, and this shows the ability for the nonprofit or the service provider to operate. We run on a reimbursement basis, so they need to be able to be steady enough to be able to put out the funding long enough to get it reimbursed. And then, performance and risk assessment. This is more of a systems review. So how do they manage their funding? How do they measure their goals? How do they look at how their clients are improving? So that is looked at. And then, program innovation. This is, do they have a Band-Aid approach? Have they done anything different in how they help their clients? And has it resulted, or is it a pilot program? Grant dismissal. The two parts of this is, it's ten points, but it's still important to note because they have to submit an application, but they also do a presentation. So one thing is to write that grant, but the other one is to explain it to the Grant Review Panel. And then, the next section is CDBG Prioritization Funding. Now, this was funding set aside for two years now. The Board of Supervisors have authorized us to set aside funding for substance abuse and treatment programs associated with these grants. So if a nonprofit has a program that they're proposing, they need to show if they can help their clients with these kinds of treatments. And so, the total would've been two hundred points if they applied for CDBG Prioritization Funding, or one sixty. Now, the funding that we put up this year, we received fifteen applications for the CDBG Public Services, and we received eight applications for ESG. They've gone through a staff review after they're received through our online system. We, if any of them are late, or any of them are incomplete, they're disqualified. Now, county staff does not review any of them. The Grant Review Panel is the ones that, based on the scoring criteria, do the score, scoring ranking. And then, they're taken to our Community Development Committee for review. And I'll go more into detail on that in a second. So the Grant Review Panel is comprised of representatives of our St. Louis Urban County member cities and a member of our CEO's office. We also have representatives from the St. Louis Community of Care that sit on this Grant Review Panel, and it's a two-day process. They do online interviews, they get to review the applications, and interact with the proposers. So they get to ask follow-up questions on the finances, on the programs itself. We ask that the interviews have a program and a finance person from the applicant to participate. Now, the Grant Review Panel's provided grant applications, online, scoring, training, and technical support. So they get an overview of the programs themselves, of the grant guidelines, and training on the online system itself. Now, the Community Development Committee is comprised of two Board of, two Board of Supervisors. And the first meeting that we have typically in the process is a presentation of potential funding that may be available from HUD, the scoring criteria, to make sure if there's any changes that we need to make. The grant process timeline is also presented at that time. Second meeting is usually the presentation of the grants received, the grant rankings, and the final funding available made to us by HUD. So the committee provides direction to the staff and on the review process, and to make sure that the community priorities are represented and aligned. So then, when we have our final scores, the CDC helps us review, and then we send them to the Board of Supervisors, like we have done today, for final consideration. Now, before you, you have, and I apologize if it's long. The, the highest ranking scoring for the CDBG Public Services was We Care, the Substance Abuse Counseling Treatment Program, at a score of one eighty-six. So part of this NOFA was that fifty percent of our CDBG allocation for public services, which was about three hundred forty-five thousand, was to be allocated and prioritized for substance abuse treatment programs. And they scored number one, and they were the only application received for that. So they will be, they are being proposed for funding recommendation of one hundred seventy-two thousand, seven fifteen, which is the exact fifty percent of the funding.
Anna, is that, is this a part of the packet?
Yes.
It is in our packet? You can't see the numbers because they're difficult to see.
Sorry.
Or we have some more?
They are attachment one of your packet?
Yeah.
Sorry. And then, so we were only able to fund six of them. Next, and hopefully this will be clear. So We Care for the We Care Substance Abuse Counseling Program, Center for Human Services for the Housing Stability Navigation Program, Children's Crisis Center for two programs, for their Searies and Turlock location, for Trauma Behavioral Recovery Program, and their Guardian Program based out in Oakdale. CASA with their Direct Services Program with youth in the foster care system for assistance in the court system. And then, Turlock Gospel Mission for their kitchen expansion for their nourish meal program. We also include Project Sentinel, which we are federally mandated at the moment to provide a housing services program, but that is paid out of our CDBG administration funding. So they are being recommended for funding for twenty-five thousand, while the public services, thirty-five thousand, five forty-three is what is being recommended. And then, our Emergency Solutions Grants. For this, it's a little bit of a formula puzzle. HUD requires that we fund at least forty percent of our emergency solutions funding to rental assistance or rapid rehousing. So no matter how it ranks, we have to fund the highest ranking rapid rehousing applicant. In this case, it was We Care. They did a combination application of shelter and rapid rehousing. They scored third, and we are recommending funding them for rapid rehousing. For the shelter, Haven Women's Center, Center for Human Services for their Low Barrier Shelter are the two top shelters that are being recommended for funding. Any questions about that? Here's another slide with it more summarized. So again, Center for Human Services for their Low Barrier Youth Shelter, Haven, and then We Care, and then we take seven point five percent allowed for county administration of the program. Now, the community impact of this, the programs align with what we have in our five-year consolidated plan. These funds are used to create opportunities for obtainable housing. They also help us create sustainable communities. Now, again, we receive these as yearly allocations. And if I'd like to add, I mean, every dollar that we use for this, it helps leverage additional community resources, multiplying the impact of the programs in the community. So we're here today again for the staff recommendations to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six CDBG Public Service Recommendations and the ESG funding recommendations, and to authorize the Director of Planning and Community Development to negotiate any necessary technical modifications to any program agreements, contracts, or grant funding consistent with HUD guidelines, and that authorized by the board today.
Thank you, Anna. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, on the consolidated plan that's good for five years, could they change, could you change it yearly, or is it every five years we set the, the plan in motion?
We can make adjustments every year, but it's a five-year plan set.
It's set. And then, on the, there was a question on the rapid rehousing, there is a match that's required.
Correct.
And is it on a reimbursement schedule, the same thing where the money is spent, and then they come back and ask for money, like it is?
Correct. When a awarded, awarded agency turns in a reimbursement request, it is required to have a dollar-for-dollar proof of funding. So a deposit, a payment, yeah, that's brought in when they make their reimbursement requests.
And if they don't have a reimbursement, they don't get the funding, what would happen with the funding if it wasn't spent?
We would have to reallocate according to their contract. They have, ESG is a two-year, CDBG is a one-year. So we'd have to go fifty percent into their contract and reallocate if they are not spending down funding.
Okay. And the Grant Review Panel, you said there's actually the seven cities and the county, some of them the CEO's office, seven, eight. COC?
Correct.
Makes nine?
Yeah.
If I, there's nine people on the review panel that do the scoring? Okay. That's it for now, alright.
Any other questions from the board? Alright, I do have a comment card for this particular item. Julie Fox. Welcome, Julie.
I'm used to Turlock, and we only get three minutes, so if I talk fast...
You have five.
That's, that's why. Good morning, and thank you for the time to speak. I've been active with the homeless community for approximately twenty years. Those twenty years have been spent with We Care and pre-We Care. When I started, the building we have now was a dream. I don't know if you're aware of the history. I think it helps to know where we come from, to know where we're going. And we started twenty years ago with Maricopa Bill Start Event, busing folks without houses to various churches, and that changed each week. It was arduous, it was hard on everyone, and it was not a long-term solution. So we worked until we were able to secure a warehouse on B Street in Turlock. It was an old metal building. It had a yellow, piece of yellow tape down the middle to separate the men from the women. It was cold, the shed provided very little, the warehouse provided very little warmth. But we made it work, and the facilities were porta-potties located outside. And again, the shelter we have now is a dream. Currently, we have a brick-and-mortar shelter. We have actual beds with mattresses. We have shower facilities, we have bathrooms inside. And with the help of our community, we feed dinner each and every night. Additionally, we have a clothes closet where the men can come and find things to wear. This is really helpful during the cold winter months. We've worked hard to get where we are at, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention that when we lost the money that we were to run on with the PHLA, it was a hit. And I wasn't sure we could do it. But because we have community support, and we have such a strong leadership board and staff, we pulled it off, and the shelter is currently serving. What difference does this make to the community? Well, let me just tell you, I initially met a man in my work who wouldn't talk to us, wouldn't talk to me because of voices in his head. And he was afraid that somehow by speaking to us, the voices would impact us. And he was a very educated person. We housed him at the shelter, he went into counseling, he stayed with us, and he is now on medication and has a successful career in sales. Last week, we had a homeless veteran. He was not a happy man. He was angry, he was bitter, he was depressed, as will happen on the streets. And he came to us, and he is now housed. And he said that he never thought he would have a new life, but now there's a second chance for him. These are the stories that we see daily at the shelter. And I'm sorry to get emotional, but twenty years of work, and I just appreciate that the Board of Supervisors seems to understand the challenges we face and the challenges our clients face. Life is very hard without doors and windows. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Julie. Next up is Stephen Filling. Am I reading that right? Probably not.
Of course.
My apologies.
No worries. Good morning, Stephen Filling. I am a professor of accounting and ethics at Stan State. As my colleague Julie Fox, I've spent over twenty years working with the We Care folks, working with the homeless and the unhoused in Turlock. This program does make a difference. I'm here to urge you to find a way to fund it. It changes people's lives quite literally. Not only the lives of those we serve, but in the case of Stan State, the lives of a lot of our students who we have working with those folks as part of their community projects. It's probably the most effective mechanism I can think of for producing an effective, and it involves citizenry, letting them help folks who really do need the help. We Care's been effective, I urge you to fund it. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Next speaker, last name Stone.
Good morning, it's Connie, with a K.
It's Connie with a K.
Two different K's.
Yes, I know. Sorry about that. We fought traffic to get up here, and I was a little shaky when I wrote all that. So I'm sorry about that. My name is Connie Stone. I'm a professor of chemistry at Stan State, and I have been involved in We Care from the standpoint of being one of the community members that provides meals. So I've worked with the people, the clients. And I'm here to tell you that this organization really helps people. It's definitely a hand up. If you don't have a meal in your belly, you can't think straight. You can't get your other problems solved. So I'm, I'm here to advocate for We Care and that it helps our community members, the residents of Turlock, and it's a way for us to show compassion to our fellow man. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Next up is Anne Strom. Strom?
Hi, good morning. Thank you. It's Anne Strom. And I appreciate that you folks have taken the time to do this work. I am an instructor. I'm a professor of sociology at CSU Stanislaus. And I teach a lot of students who are hungry and homeless. And like Connie just said, it's really hard to think if you don't have food feeding your brain and if you're trying to figure out where your next place to sleep is. About 25% of our student body is hungry on any given day, and about 10% is homeless. And so what does that have to do with We Care? Well, again, as somebody who works with students who are struggling, I also see what is happening in the broader community. And so I'm here because I want to thank you, sincerely thank you, for these efforts that you are making today to ensure the stability of the only support for our unhoused in Turlock, which is the We Care and the Gospel Mission. We're heading into some economically difficult times, and the minimal resources that we actually have in Turlock are really, really, literally hanging on by a thread. And so your provision of these desperately needed resources will go a long way in securing the health and the vitality of the Turlock community. Our unhoused community members matter, whether they're students or whether they are somebody that is just having a struggle and doesn't have resources. And so I really want to thank you very, very much for doing what you can to keep We Care and Gospel Mission in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Next up is Ron Breidgrom.
Good morning. Ron Breidgrom from Turlock. The 2021-2022 Stan's Law Civil Grand Jury stated in their report about homelessness, quote, "Do we judge programs based on their good intent or on the actual outcomes?" End of quote. Their first recommendation was that we, I quote, "should focus funding and other resources on those agencies and organizations with demonstratable success." End of quote. So let's look at some facts about the proposed programs. First, We Care, when We Care presented at the Stan's Law's Homeless Alliance in February, they stated 330 men came through their shelter during the year. Of those 330, only 1%, a total of three men, along with two individuals from Turlock Gospel Mission, were housed via their rapid rehousing program. Previously, $40,000 was granted to We Care for rapid rehousing to be expended in fiscal year 2024 and 2025. But as of July 10, 2025, according to their grant application, 40% of the funds still have not been expended. In their grant application, We Care states that they do not have the HUD required 100% matching funds for rapid rehousing and did not lay out a plan for how to achieve this requirement. I want to note that HUD specifically does not allow shelter operation funds or volunteer hours to be used as matching funds for rapid rehousing. It has to be specifically rapid rehousing. The rapid rehousing program will get most of their clients from their shelter. But there is the question of if the shelter will even be able to stay open as they are not recommended for any funding they requested for shelter operations. We Care has not demonstrated they can run a rapid rehousing program successfully, nor that they have the matching funds required to be able to use the $80,000 that they asked for. They might not even have the shelter from which they would obtain most of their clients for this program. We Care's previous CDBG substance abuse counseling program had problems spending all of the money, partly, and I quote, "because substance use counselor staffing went down." End of quote. I ask, has this problem been solved? In their February presentation to SHA, We Care stated that, quote, "multiple guests have exited into substance abuse treatment center." End of quote. But without precise numbers, we don't know how successful this program has been. We Care states they do not attract homeless from outside of Turlock. So how will they serve the population of the seven cities and county area of the jurisdiction for these grants? We Care serves men, so how will they help women and families that need substance abuse counseling or rapid rehousing? I asked the supervisors to reconsider these grant recommendations. And I also want to point out that what the funding is being recommended is for the rapid rehousing and the substance abuse counseling and treatment, and nothing for shelter operations. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ron.
Hey, Ron. It's nice when you get five minutes, huh? You don't have to talk fast. If you're, if you're on in Turlock, he's got to talk really fast.
Next up is David Franson.
Good morning, Supervisors. I'm David Franson from Turlock. I just wanted to bring up some of the information that's been given. Also, for our scenario in Turlock, I'm really here advocating for the whole situation in Turlock, which you guys had seen. And we sort of ended up in the news with even the governor, like, attacking our city because it was falsely reported it was about the $1, when it wasn't. There were issues of accountability, and those issues have still not been resolved. And they're ongoing, by the way. So there is some stuff being improved in our community around the homeless, you know, shelter area that we have, the, I think it's called SB2 Zone. So first of all, you guys had granted $270,000 to We Care. That was not lost by the city, which was actually reported in the Turlock Journal over this $1. There was a request to help clean up the area that was due to accountability. Now, what that accountability was that a lot of people did not report was that in our municipal code, which We Care was not in compliance with, it said, "Operations must ensure that loitering does not occur on the property during off-hours and must ensure that clients are not loitering, littering, or otherwise creating a nuisance to the neighborhood. A security plan shall be submitted to the Turlock Police Department for approval before the open." So, so like, our city council was trying to address that for the neighborhood, and it's also right next to downtown. And we literally had a board member say that this is the small businesses issue, and they should pay for, like, cleanup and damages and stuff. And it's specifically not a We Care problem. The municipal code is actually for the shelters to actually address the issues we're addressing. Our council and many people in our community have actually generously been trying to address it in a nice manner, but really they're in violation of the municipal code. So that grant was lost because they just wouldn't try to adhere to actually mitigating these impacts, which we have talked about for, like, you know, 15 years. That's all we were asking. And so they did not want to contribute to something to get them in compliance, which they still would have had $240,000 of your grant. And I believe there were discussions with, with our supervisor, Kieza, that was trying to help, and I believe our city manager and could be the mayor, to try to address that. And there was supposedly a deal to address that. It blew up at the council meeting. So I'm bringing up these issues because you're now looking to award more grants, and I'm going to tell you where it's going to end in the same way we have issues ongoing. And as far as the rankings of the grants, the funding was a big part of it. And they self-admit in their grant applications that the funding is a problem. It's actually documented in the news it's a problem. They don't even know how long they can go, how much they can provide. That's all documented. So I'm a little, you know, I'm a little curious how they ranked so high, with that being a main thing. It's like very uncertain. And then also, again, what they're actually providing because they did apply for shelter grant, and they didn't get ranked for that, yet they actually say they need the funds for that. And then it looks like some of this grant funds for certain things, like a program, you know, like for the substance abuse program or the rapid rehousing program. It looks like it's like subsidizing the shelter. That does not look good. That looks like something going around instead of just saying, hey, the shelter needs funds, which they say they do, but they didn't get a grant for shelter. Now, my thought is because they're also, I mean, I don't believe I would rank them high as a shelter. They have issues. Also, too, according to, like, NOFA, that they need to have a 90% utilization requirement. And I believe that they submitted that they were at like 94%. But that was only with two weeks. It was only with two weeks off, and they were closed for a full month. So if you take that, that would probably bring them down to close to that 90% minimum. But also, if you look at the beds available report that we've been getting since they've been reopened in August, which was uncertain. They just, oh, we're opening because we got some, you know, commitments. But right now, I've seen beds available about nine or 10, and then up to 25. So that would take them down to like an 80% utilization currently since they've been open with a changed environment that we're dealing with. And I think that environment is actually going across all of California. It's actually accountability, which is what was trying to be addressed with the first grant that you guys gave them. So if you could please reconsider this. It would be damaging to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. That is my last comment card on this agenda item. Are there any more comments? Good morning.
Yes, good morning. I'm Marion Pitt. I'm a member of the community, but also you probably know me and my role as the chairman of the Community System of Care. I just want to say thank you to Anna and Angela and the staff for the very measured and inclusive process that they use to survey or reach out and collaborate on getting grant applications, reviewing them, and also making decisions and ranking them. It's not an easy job. I fully support the recommendations for all the full funding, for all of them. As you know, through the point-in-time count, this last year, we were able to actually reduce the number of homeless in the county overall. The only community that actually saw an increase was Turlock, by 40, which is unfortunate. But we'll, you know, we're all on the same team trying to move the needle. So I just want to say thank you for the process and certainly the participation of all the agencies that were recommended for funding, are full participants of the Continuum of Care, and we look forward to working for them in the future. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Sorry, Manny always mutes me. I'm not sure why. The point-in-time count increased by 40. So what was the number? I can't remember what Turlock's number was.
I think we went up to, they went to 250. About 250.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Any other public comment? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Sandy Singh. I'm the president of the Board of Directors for the We Care program in Turlock. I actually started with the We Care program as the case manager for the rapid rehousing program over 10 years ago and have since been on the Board. I'm here asking for the continued support of our rapid rehousing and substance use program. For those of you who may not know, we're primarily a volunteer-driven organization. The staff we're able to hire are the ones out there every day providing direct services to the unhoused neighbors in our community. I realize not everyone agrees with services for the homeless. But the truth is, it's really easy to complain and point out the problems. The harder and far more important work is building the solutions, and that's what We Care is really committed to doing. And I think our results speak for themselves. Last year alone, our rapid rehousing program moved seven people into permanent housing through our substance use grant. We supported 34 people with housing, 67 with healthcare appointments, 33 connections to social security benefits, and 111 with access to IDs. To us, they're not just numbers. They're people, they're stories, and they have a better shot at stability. I'll be honest, we were disappointed not to receive funding for our shelter, but we remain optimistic and fully committed to this work as our generous community members have really stepped up. And we are really happy for our partners and other agencies who have received this funding because we know it's not about competition. It's about making sure the community gets the services that they need. We started as a homeless shelter. We've grown into and now have housing and wraparound services. And with their continued support, we'll keep focusing on solutions. Thank you for your partnership, your investment, and for helping us continue this important work. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Greg Baba. Pleased to be back here in front of you guys again. I wasn't planning to speak, but I felt after what I just heard, I needed to come forward and say a little of my piece. If you've been following at all the Turlock City Council meetings for this past year, and I know, Vito, you've been to some of the meetings that we've been to, this is just a repeat of the kind of adversity that we've found to the We Care program. For whatever reason, the current group there seems to have something against us. And the only thing I can determine is they want to shut us down. I look, I'm not, I haven't been in in 20 years, but I've been in it the last few years, and I've looked at a lot of things, a lot of the support that the community and even the city council over the years has given. And We Care has gotten a lot of praise. So what happened? What's different now? Why is it all of a sudden that there's so much adversity? But it's not the community. If you go to the council meetings, you'll see a parade of people coming up supporting We Care, and you see one or two individuals, they're constantly fighting to say, no, this is not a good program. I've been involved, I've been to We Care. I've been to the dinners. You have total community involvement. You have churches. You have organizations. Every night is scheduled on a calendar. As far as the rooms that were talked about, the beds, up until the end of June, we were turning people away. So it's only been these last, these first few weeks when we've reopened, because people didn't know whether we were going to reopen, that we're starting to fill up again. And we are still seeing, see activity. If you look at the state and what, and even across the country, they're trying to help the unhoused to get into shelters. Homelessness is a complicated thing. You've got to help people, and that takes time. Housing people, finding housing. You've got to find apartments for people. You've got to find people that are willing to rent at the levels that HUD will approve, and that's difficult to find. So it is a process. In the meantime, these people need places to stay. And we provide that. We only provide 49 beds because that's all we've got. But we need to keep going for these poor people that need that help. So I'm just asking you reconsider. I don't know if there's any money left of that PLA money, but we really... I don't know if there's any money left of that PLA money, but we really need it. And if there's any way you can find to support us in the, in the shelter, that's right, we don't have money for the shelter. We've been getting it from donations and organizations, we need more, so if there's anything you can do to help us with that, I really appreciate it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any other? Come on up.
Brian. Hello. Anyway, I talked about this before, on the sheltering. We have basically three districts. We have 2,200 homeless people in our county, and we, and if we break that up, two-thirds of them aren't going to show up in a shelter. But yet, the ones that we do have is basically in three districts. And the amount of money that we've put out so far, like the bridge program was 3.5 million, we wound up with 48 little units, which is ridiculous, they cost a thousand dollars a square foot. Now, we're not using our money very well, because Turlock is one of the areas that we need homeless taken care of. Chance, his area, and Patterson, that's another one, and Modesto, those are our three basic areas. Now, with the kind of funding and the kind of money that we've been dumping into the homeless, we should have provided a hell of a lot more. We could have built three 50,000 square foot buildings, it doesn't matter with what we've spent. The 16 and a half million on the motel remodel, the 3.5 million over here for the bridge program, I mean, let's spread it out and be more economical, and then let's work with businesses around our area. Let's get the homeless to work with Taco Bell, Kentucky Fried Chicken. I mean, I've been in places where they'll actually set up little booths from each of these, and it helps the homeless. At the same time, it gives them a tax advantage if we work with them, and we could do that with every franchise out there to help these homeless, and they would be glad to do it. And that's what we kind of got to work into. If we structure it properly, where we have three units that are working properly, we'll have all the resources that we need in those units. And then the second thing is the police in our cities should turn around, and when they find homeless people that are in need and on the streets, they should turn around and help them get to these places that we build. But this is what we need. It's not very big construction, you know, it's just small buildings that we can put together, that each of them will have a small room, and we can fill them, and then we get them the need that they need for getting started in life again. But that's what we got to do, is just focus the money on bigger projects that will contain more of these people, because we're not looking at very many people that are homeless. But when you think about the area that we are, 2,200 is all there is in this county, 2,200, they're not all going to come to those places, so we don't need much, but start, stop scattering it out. These little bungalow houses, this little land that we've got to pay for, the connections, I mean, we can be smarter. Many homes even are cheaper than what we paid for those tough shits, you know? You could get $7,000 for a many home, you could put two or three people in that, not $75,000 for 75 square feet. That's ridiculous. We got to think smarter so we can help these people out. Give them their grants.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any others like to make comment? Saying none, I'm going to bring it back to the board for comments and a motion.
So, if I could... Did it again. So, um, Manny and I sit on the, on the, um, community development committee that Anna referred to, and so, um, I, I know we very much supported this, um, this funding and the ranking of the funding. You know, the county's been involved in, in homelessness, probably, our county, probably before the state really started to get involved in it, probably 10 years ago, we started looking at this stuff, and, and realizing what a priority it needed to be, and, and an issue that we needed to deal with. Um, and, and I can tell you, early on, we recognized, um, the issues with homelessness, a good chunk of it, majority of it, are individuals suffering from serious drug, alcohol, or mental health issues. And I sound like a broken record, but I, and I am, because we could see this early on. Um, there are those who are down and out on their luck, and, and that, that's a very small percentage, most of them are suffering from serious issues that need to be treated, that all involve treatment. Um, unfortunately, the state didn't, didn't recognize that early on, and there was a lot of money that was wasted. Funding that came from the state that had, that had strings attached, as funding always does, um, coming from the state, had strings attached and requirements, requirements, you know, housing first, all those things, and housing first is a good thing, except housing first gets us nowhere without treatment, and, and treating these individuals suffering from these severe, um, like I said, drug, alcohol, and mental health issues. People that have been exposed to things that, that, but for the grace of God, we have not been, most of us here in this room, and need help to be treated, um, to, to get themselves off the street. So, so just to address kind of money wasted over the years from the state, but, or, and they talk about money that we've wasted here locally, um, most of that money had strings attached to it. We, we recognized problems early in how, how it needed to be treated, but we had requirements as to what we had to do. Great progress has been made here. Finally, the state actually has come around to recognize that individuals, um, that a large portion of these individuals on the street are suffering from serious drug, alcohol, and mental health issues, and the state now is starting to change their funding and, and their requirements, because they're recognizing that this, this is an area that we need to treat if we're going to get these individuals off the street. So, um, so it's good to see that happening finally in California, and the redirection of the funding and the requirements now that's starting to happen. We, as a CDC, um, made a commitment, and this board, um, to, to dedicate 50% of the CDBG funding, um, towards treatment, um, to try to get individual, individuals into facilities that needed treated, treatment. What We Care is proposing is exactly what we need, exactly what we've needed to, um, to get going, and that's why they ranked so high in this funding. Um, so, I, you know, we've, for whatever reason, I don't know, Mr. Babo, what's going on in Turlock, and I have, um, I can tell you for the 10 years that I've been involved in it, um, we've been, been dealing with this. This is not something that you can just say, we don't have a problem here, we're going to kick them out of our city. It is a problem everywhere, and it has to be dealt with, and, and it's been very difficult, and I'm just speaking personally, and, and over the years, in, in, in trying to, to work with Turlock to do this, to, to help with this, the situations there. I can tell you that We Care is doing the Lord's work, and, and we very much, um, appreciate what's going on there, and I can 100% tell you how much, um, I personally support this and this funding towards We Care.
Any others? Manny?
Yep. Uh, I appreciate the comments by my colleague, and all of these survey rankings and stuff, I don't think they're gone, just, we just go through them and not put a lot of thought into it. I know staff spends a lot of time, and then when it comes to the meeting, we look at all of these, and we obviously feel that this is a need, and, you know, the county's going to, uh, like Terry mentioned, we've been involved in addressing homelessness as, as long as I can remember, even being on city council in Modesto. Um, I, I, we do have the privilege with Modesto to work on a lot of regional or citywide, countywide, uh, countywide projects, um, and we hope that all the other cities that were an ally that helps, and that's why we feel this is necessary to, uh, provide this funding, so that, uh, you can address the issues in your communities.
I guess first I want to discuss funding, because we had workforce development before, which is another component. BHRS, Community Services Agency, has a homeless, uh, housing, uh, under them, this is planning department, so we get money in different tranches, and I think, uh, Terry, you spoke of, there's so many strings attached to everything we do, and we're trying to cobble money together in consortiums through CDBG grants, um, emergency solutions are just a few. You talk about the bridge housing, has the BHRS, Behavioral Health Recovery Services component. So, it, it is difficult, and it's very expensive. I would agree with you, Brian. Every time we, we get funding back to anything that has to do with government, comes under a much, uh, much higher cost than buying, uh, something that was built by the private sector. I'm not saying that's right or wrong, that's reality. And, and so, the, the funding level from the state and the federal government is probably, uh, going south, I think, when we talked about workforce development, I think, you know, there's a concern, there's a concern on the, the no strings attached funding that comes, uh, through the state and the federal government for homeless. It's going to be very difficult on a go-forward basis. Um, I went out with our care team, Community Assessment Response Engagement Team, a couple of weeks ago, and then I went with probation the following week. I did the District Two, which was Turlock in Houston, Waterford area, and, uh, amazing stuff, I went to Columbia Park, that was our first stop, and it was during the, I don't know, right after We Care had opened back up, and met with a couple of gentlemen who were always asking where they're staying, and they were actually staying at We Care. A gal was staying at the Gospel Mission, and then some of them, uh, aren't staying anywhere. They don't want to, uh, they either have animals, they need a low barrier type situation, and, and that's not accessible, except for here in Modesto. And, but it, it's interesting, as I ask the questions, because I get caught in the middle of this Turlock situation all the time, and we're funders, payer of last resorts, and, and I guess I should ask the one question. Are we required to follow, um, track results in the end?
Yes, we, um, follow the outcomes, um, quarterly, per reimbursement request, and then at the end of the year, we do a reconciliation. So, yes, we follow the outcomes, um, as...
Okay. Forgot to ask you that earlier. But when, when you look at the system, and how much money we invest in the system, it's very difficult, because of the two things you talked about, the behavioral health component, and the drug and alcohol, there's not enough drug and alcohol beds in Stanislaus County. Uh, having people stabilized in a housing situation is extremely important, uh, there's no doubt about that, uh, in order to receive treatments. I think that's one of the difficulties in most shelters, because they close during the day, and people are not accessible, that would, that would be when drug and alcohol counselors are more available, not just at nighttime between 7:00 and, uh, 7:00 AM in the morning. And, and so, getting that system right, and I know we put some of our cannabis money, we actually put it towards drug and alcohol beds also, uh, seeing the, the issue. There is a, there's a divide in Turlock, I, I can't even explain it myself. You know, there are impacts from homelessness, no doubt about it, and how, uh, people sit down and figure out how to make that system work, so that it, it works for everyone, not we can't have shelters, and not we only need shelters, and we don't have any responsibility. I, I thought we had, on the PHLA, I did have conversations with the city manager, I thought we had an agreement, kind of, but it just, it didn't, didn't come together. And, and I insert myself to a degree, but again, in the end, it's not my responsibility, whether it's cited or not, what we have is, we're funders of this program, and, and they scored, and I trust the, uh, two board members, Supervisor Graywall and Supervisor Withrow, uh, with the priorities. I would suggest that anyone that wants to change the way the system operates, shows up next year, when they go through this, the start of this process, and attend the meetings of the Community Development Committee, because the priorities are set, based on that five-year plan, and I guess you'd said there could be, um, some changes to it, but if you want to see the money spent differently, uh, that would be the way to go about it. I think at this point, and I, again, I feel confident that it's been a fair assessment. There are concerns, I think, that, uh, the CEO and myself, we're having a meeting in Turlock with the mayor, and I can't even tell you what day that is, the next week or so, maybe two weeks. Uh, and, this will be one of the topics, about what we do to make sure it is a cohesive strategy, because it's, there are outcomes, but the outcomes seem to be similar, when you're talking about the Gospel Mission, Salvation Army in Modesto, the Low Barrier Shelter, We Care, Gospel Mission in Turlock. You, you're, you're trying to provide some stability. The, the right thing is to have shelter operations or day centers, where you can get the people's services during the daytime. That's the difficulty. The care team is, uh, something I, I respect what they do so much, but again, we're going park-to-park to the railroad tracks to, uh, you know, just all over, we spend a lot of time driving, trying to find people, and provide them services, uh, get their medications, their psych medications, and, and you may show up with their psych medications and they're not there. So, it's an inefficient way to deliver services. It's necessary though, because they're, that's really the only way to provide it to them during the day. So, uh, again, I, I don't want to insert myself into Turlock politics, I think that the, We Care have, and the Gospel Mission have been doing good work. I need to figure out about the impacts myself, and try and help, if there are ways we can help in mitigating impacts, uh, like we, well, we really haven't done, but like we could do here in Modesto also, uh, with that. So, uh, again, I'll be supporting this idea.
Thank you, Vito. Uh, I'd like to just make a, a quick comment, I'm not going to go over what my colleagues have to say, had to say, and I agree with it. To me, this is a common sense vote. We have funding, and we need services to be provided. We have a group of nonprofits who are going to provide those services, they've gone through the process, been narrowed down, and now we have a list of nonprofits to provide those services, and we need those services provided. So, to me, this is a common sense vote, and I'll be supporting it. So, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second. I have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, moving on, public hearings. Public hearing to consider the planning commission's recommendation of approval for rezone application number PLN 2025-0005, West Stanislaus Irrigation District, a request to rezone, and is further described on the agenda spot. Jeremy Baller.
Good morning, Chair Condon, members of the board, CEO Hayes, County Council Bose, Jeremy Baller, excuse me, Senior Planner, here to present the rezone application for West Stanislaus Irrigation District. This is a request to rezone three parcels totaling 11,250 square feet, from single-family residential to planned development, to construct a 3,583-square-foot administrative office for the West Stanislaus Irrigation District. The project site is located at 116 East Street, between Kern Street and Highway 33 in the community of Wesley. The site has a general plan designation of low-density residential, a Wesley community planned designation of residential, and its own single-family residential. Site is surrounded by residential development to the south along Kern Street, and further to the southwest, north of Howard Road, Highway 33, and the Southern Pacific Railroad is located to the east. Directly to the north of the project site is a West Stanislaus Fire Protection District station house, and other commercial uses, uh, to the east along Highway 33 as well. There's also ag production further to the north and west of the project site, however, to note, the parcel to the west is at, which is in production across Kern Street, is actually zoned R1 single-family residential, similar to the project site. Site itself is currently used as administrative office for the district, consisting of a 1,398 square-foot building, detached storage building, which both will be demolished if the project is approved. Remaining balance of the property is undeveloped. Um, also to note, the, the parcel to the east there, across the alleyway, um, is owned and operated by the district, uh, for storage. Facilities for public utilities are permitted in the single-family residential zoning district with a use permit, subject to the development standards of the, of that district. However, in this case, the proposed development would not meet the setback standards required by the R1 zoning district, specifically the setback of the proposed building from E and Kern Street, as well as the setback of the proposed parking lot from E Street. Thus, the application proposes to rezone the project site to a new planned development zoning district to allow, to establish alternative development standards, which would be consistent of this reduced front and side yard setback for the office and parking lot. If approved, the new administrative office for the district will consist of the 3,583 square-foot building, and that will include office space, employee break room, and conference room space. The project will also develop the balance of the parcel paving, a 13-space parking lot, including installation of curb gutter and sidewalk, as well as landscaping along the fringe of both E and Kern Streets. There will be pedestrian and fringe improvements, that will also include landscaped bulbouts, additional landscaping pros to be installed around the perimeter of the building and parking lot. Um, there will also be a development of the site, uh, that will also include a masonry wall on the southern property line, and development of 10 additional parking spaces, actually street parking spaces on E Street, um, and then three tandem parking spaces on Kern Street. Um, also, if approved, the district will merge the three underlying lots prior to issuance of an, any building permit for new construction. The administrative office is proposed to be 22 feet in height, and will have a facade, uh, that incorporates stucco, glass, and rock material. The district proposed a five-foot-by-four-foot-tall monument sign, and a two-by-seven-foot individually lettered wall sign, and then operations of the, of the, the new office will remain the same, Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM, and will have four office employees, and then there'll be three field employees reporting the site daily, with an average of two customers visiting, visiting the site per day. So, as discussed in the agenda item before you, the, the request to planned development zoning district is intended to allow the modifications, uh, for requirements of diversification of different uses, building spaces, lot spaces... of different uses, building spaces, lot spaces, while ensuring compliance with the general plan. So with this new office as proposed, not being able to meet the required setbacks for the building and the parking lot, and the rezone to a new planned development was to establish these unique development standards and the staff felt that was appropriate. Additionally, with proposed development standards for setbacks, the proposed street parking is not required to meet any of the on-site parking requirements. However, the street parking will provide safety and aesthetic enhancements to the community infrastructure. The county's public works did not object to the proposed street parking and provided the applicant with the appropriate county design standards. General plan consistency was evaluated when processing this project, which included the site's general plan land use designation of single-family residential and the Wesley community plan designation of residential. As stated before, the general plan finds that planned development zoning may be appropriate with a low-density residential designation, provided the development does not exceed established building intensity of the designation. As stated before, public facilities can be permitted in this residential zoning district with a use permit. The planned development was, was sought to allow the unique site and development setback standards. And this will still, eventually, or, excuse me, will maintain the similar building intensity under the R1 zoning district. Additionally, the Wesley community plan does provide any, does not provide any specific requirements for development, with the exception of available utilities. The project was referred to the West Stanislaus Community Service District, who did not provide comment on the county's referral, but did provide that the applicant, provide the applicant a will-serv letter for both public and waters, and sewer services. In terms of zoning consistency, as stated above, to approve a rezone, the new planned development zoning district is required to be consistent with the general plan and community designations, which staff believes to be the case. If approved, the development standards associated with the new planned, planned development zoning district will include the alternative development standards for building and parking lot setbacks, as well as site development standards that are consistent with county codes such as landscaping, signage, lighting standards, et cetera. The Planning Commission held a public hearing for the project on July seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. No one spoke in opposition to the project and the applicant's representative and architect, Don Phillips, spoke in favor of the project. Ultimately, the Planning Commission, on a vote of eight to zero, recommended the Board of Supervisors approve this project. Pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, initial study was circulated to interested parties and responsible agencies for review and comment. Negative declaration has been prepared for approval. Conditions of approval reflecting these referral responses have been placed on the project. So to conclude, the Planning Commission has recommended the Board of Supervisors approve this project. That included all the findings that is in your staff recommendations, portion of the agenda item, and those findings include the environmental review, the rezone, the improvements, as well as waiving the reading of the, and adopting the ordinance, and then lastly, project approval. So that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any question, Jeremy?
So the intensity, you said there's not going to be an intensification of the use. Correct. But they require a larger footprint because they were out.
Essentially, yeah. As I understand it, the, the current office is not meeting their, their size needs and that's why they were requesting to, to, to this new building with a little bit larger size, but ultimately, the intensity in terms of the, the use of that parcel would be similar to what was found in the R1 zoning district.
Any other questions? I'm gonna open up a public hearing. I don't think we have any written comments. Anyone like to make public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, I'm gonna close public hearing, bring it back to the board for a motion.
Motion to approve all staff recommendations.
Second. I have a first and a second. Which one got it first?
Chance.
Chance can have it.
It's my birthday, thank you.
Happy. All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Unanimous. All right, moving on, discussion items. Approval to rehire Eric Jackson prior to the one hundred and eighty-day sit-out period as required by the Public Employees Pension Reform Act of twenty thirteen. Stanislaus Regional 911 Director Casey Young.
Good morning.
Good morning.
SR911 is here today to ask for your help, your approval to rehire retiree Eric Jackson prior to the one hundred and eighty-day sit-out period. SR911 technical staff are currently committed to the CAD project. And at the same time, the county CIO has directed all departments to implement multi-factor authentication to strengthen system security. SR911 remains one of the last departments pending implementation and allocating this resource will make a significant difference in meeting county-wide security standards.
Any questions for Casey? Seeing none, I'm gonna open up public comment. Any public comment on this particular item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
Motion approved.
I have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Do you want me to hold off on that?
Well, at, at least we need to note that Supervisor Casey had stepped away from the dice for the vote, so.
I didn't reckon, I didn't recognize that before I called for it.
I need you, Vito. Give me your.
We're just gonna delay for a little bit, I'm sure he wants to be a part of the vote.
No rush, Vito.
He's regretting having a speaker put in his mouth.
Tick tock, tick tock.
There are speakers in the bathroom.
Again, I have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. All right, correspondents. We acknowledge our correspondents and receive correspondents and refer the recommended on the agenda. Board of Supervisor reports. Chance.
Just short report. Nine eleven ceremony will be hosted in series by the Series American Legion four-nine-one. It will be at the Series Whitmore Park at eight-thirty AM. It's a good way to honor the fallen and I do appreciate the American Legion for hosting that annually. And then as mentioned earlier in the meeting by Ms. Trumley, the Crow's Landing Bonita Pool opening is this Saturday. The community is very excited about it and we look forward to that, that ceremony coming up.
All right, thank you, Chance.
Are you gonna be the first one to go in?
I, I can't commit to that. I'm far too mild.
Come on.
I don't know, it might be a little too chilly.
Any others? All right, Legislative Fiscal Management report.
Just a couple of items to report. I, I think you, you've probably seen in the news that the federal budget is once again coming up against a deadline to avert a government shutdown. This seems to happen pretty routinely now, but we feel like we do need to report it, just so it's on your radar if you were not all otherwise aware. We do expect there to be some kind of resolution, at least a temporary one. And at the state level, it is our end-of-the-season crunch on state legislation with dozens of major bills, trailer bills, moving in the next twenty-four to thirty-six hours. So we're tracking all those late-breaking changes. Counties are actively working at the legislative level on issues around land use, procurement, and those types of matters. So lots of things for us to take a look at. I do wanna acknowledge, I mentioned this in a prior update, but our chair did sign a letter on behalf of the Board of Supervisors opposing AB six ninety, which is now a two-year bill that aims to reform our intelligent defense system by ending the different types of ways in which you can contract for public defense services. No direct impact to Stanislaus County, but we felt it was important to weigh in and let them know for the future what our opinion on that matter would be. And lastly, I do wanna announce that the recommended twenty-twenty-six final budget for the county has been released. It's available for review on our website. We look forward to presenting that budget to the board at your September thirtieth meeting. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Okay, we are going to adjourn, but we do have closed session.
Yes, we have closed session this morning. First is a conference with legal counsel, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section five-four-nine, five-six-point-nine subdivision D two or three. We have two matters to discuss there. And as I've previously informed, the, 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 the government code requires us to explain what the facts and circumstances are in this safe harbor. The first matter, the facts and circumstances to be discussed are contained in a letter dated August fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, from the law offices of Ross and Schwartz, on behalf of their client, the Salida Fire Protection District, to myself, informing that the Salida Community Fire District has authorized litigation against the county to force the county to apply conditional ministerial permits such as building permits that would require property owners to join the fire district's community financing district and pay a development fee based on the proposed new development or be denied the otherwise ministerial permit. The fire district's August fifteenth letter is available from the clerk of the board, if you'd like to see that. The second item, the facts and circumstances to be discussed are contained in a letter dated November eighth, twenty twenty-four, from the sheriff to the Board of Supervisors, requesting the Board appoint conflict counsel regarding the sheriff's disagreement with the consolidated emergency dispatch agency selection of dispatch software. The sheriff's letter is available from the clerk of the board as well. The second item, the third item we'll be considering is a conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section five-four-nine, five-six-point-nine subdivision D one. We have one case to consider, Ryan Brady versus Stanislaus County et al., that's in the Stanislaus County Superior Court and the case number is CB twenty-four zero zero seven four-four-nine. With that, appropriate for public comment on any of those items?
Any public comment? All right, word, Jeremy.